98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Reports started servicing on social media over the weekend that a certain furry animal had been spotted in Swayze Parkway. The reports were confirmed by a local rescue team which was monitoring the situation. We went down on Monday morning to see for ourselves and tried not to disturb the seal who was taking a nice little nap on the riverbank when we arrived. On Tuesday, we hopped on a Zoom call to speak with Ashley Stokes, the Director of Marine Mammal Rescue at the Seco Science Center, to learn more about the situation.
It's been in and out of the water, which we expect a seal to do. It's also been observed eating fish on its own, which is a great sign. When it has passed fecal, it has looked normal. But a lot of people, especially for anybody watching this, if you've seen that animal, it does have a wound across its lower chest. So that's something we want to keep an eye on. When it's out in totally saltwater, saltwater is a great healer. So unless that wound is really deep or really infected, there's a good chance it can heal on its own. So unless it has something else going on, you know, we want these animals to stay out in the wild. It's the best spot for them.
This was an Exeter's first seal sighting. The Exeter Historical Society was able to find in their archives a newspaper article from February of 2006. The article describes a sighting of a young harp seal migrating south from Canada that stopped by Exeter for a quick rest. The following day after our interview, the Marine Mammal Rescue Team in Swayze made the decision to collect the young female harbor seal. Unfortunately, the wound on the seal's stomach started getting worse each time the animal hauled itself out of the water to rest. In addition to her wound, she had begun sneezing and had nasal discharge, both evidence of a respiratory infection. Her morning nap was the perfect opportunity for the team to collect her. After a full exam and triage care, she was transported to a rehabilitation facility, the National Marine Life Center, for further care. The folks at the Seco Science Center want to thank the public for their cooperation and assistance by keeping the team informed about sightings. The work of the Marine Mammal Rescue Team is funded almost entirely by donations and has help from local volunteers. If you're interested in learning more about the organization, you can visit their website at secosciencenot.org. Head to our YouTube channel to watch the Exeter Outdoors episode with more interviews with Marine Mammal Rescue Director Ashley Stokes and footage from their work with marine mammals up and down the coast. Residents took to the streets of Exeter for the Community Walking Tour entitled Housing Hiding in Plain Sight. The 1.5-mile guided tour featured discussions from housing experts and local data from municipal officials. The tour passed well-known locations such as the Exeter Mills and the Squam Scott Block, but also featured various smaller mixed-use buildings. Community Engagement Coordinator of New Hampshire Housing, Sarah Reitzman, spoke at the event, challenging the norms of how we think about housing.
Sort of community character and what does it mean for something to fit into the community and do the things that you see fit into this community? Could they fit into other communities? So we'll have all-
Full coverage of this event is on our YouTube page.
The Town of Exeter went green this Sunday at their 50th Annual Electric Car Show. This spring, educational event offered a chance for community members to hear from local EV owners about what driving electric really means. This event also offered exclusive looks at vehicles such as the Rivian R1T and Zero Motorcycle.
I, so I love talking about electric cars, answering questions, showing the car. And it's, you know, I have the car to use it, so we have two kids and a dog. So I want, you know, welcome people to sit in it. People can drive it, like, you know, just kind of get the word out.
And the word is out. Families and car manufacturers alike are seeing the potential in electric vehicles, with emerging discussions regarding the usage of electric cars for families, business professionals, and off-road enthusiasts. Multiple car dealers even offered free test drives of some of their newest electric models at the event. Here's what Chair of the Exeter Energy Committee Renee Allen had to say on the matter.
The point of the day is it's an educational event so that people can learn about EVs if they're right for their driving experience, how to put chargers in your house, and all this under no pressure from dealerships or salespeople. It's complete education and entertainment.
Although popping the hood may not offer much when it comes to these battery-powered cars, their performance matches up with that of any other vehicle on the road. And with varying manufacturers and models, there's a version for everyone. So even the biggest combustion engine fans can appreciate these futuristic cars. These futuristic cars.
Measuring in at a whopping 43 feet long, Nile the Humpback Whale was inflated in the children's room at the Exeter Public Library. The program is just one of the unique ways the library is trying to keep kids engaged with learning, even in the summer months.
This was just one part of our summer reading program this year, in which we had many, many, tons of great events for kids and adults alike. We had everything from Live Lobsters to Nile the Whale to our annual Stuff Pet Show, all a part of the way that we like to keep kids from the community coming to the library and reading throughout the entire year, even in the summer.
Kids of all ages enjoyed the event.
I thought that was very interesting how they had the inflatable whale and inside you could see all the organs of the whale. And she told all about, you know, how the whale breathes and how it eats and showed us some sample teeth. It's very cool. Absolutely engages the public. It engages the kids. It's a great, great idea.
And I learned that, um, the whale, um, poops out red poop. My favorite part was seeing the teeth, or seeing the teeth.
Getting to hold the, um, the lake's teeth.
I have another, um, favorite, and it was holding the two bones.
The program was hosted by the Blue Ocean Society for Marine Conservation, based in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Their mission is to protect marine life in the Gulf of Maine through research, education, and inspiring action.
And this particular one is modeled after this whale. We give them names based on the patterns on their tails. So this one is named after the big river in Africa. Does anybody know what that is?
If you're interested in hosting Nile or Ladder, the 65-foot-long fin whale, more information is available on their website, blueoceansociety.org.
All told today, we handed out at least 150, 160 tickets. I would estimate that we probably had close to 200 people come in throughout the whole day and at least be in awe of, at least look at Nile the Whale as they took up probably about half of our picture book shelving down the way there. By far, by far, our most popular event of the year, and it was our finale, so.
To learn more about the library's upcoming events, visit their new website at www.exeterpl.org. In a recent meeting of the Piscataqua Region Monitoring Collaborative, scientists from the Piscataqua Region Estuaries Partnership, PRM-C for short, discussed data showing positive improvements in oysters and fish numbers in the region.
PRMC is the Piscataqua Region Monitoring Collaborative, and it's a group of municipalities who discharge wastewater to the Great Bay watershed. And we're all working together, providing additional funding for research that-
Okay, good evening again. Welcome back to the December 5, 2022 Town of Exeter Select Board. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and good evening to those of you watching at home. I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectwoman Levy Rantriolif. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanter. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
We also have our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna.
And my name is Nico Papakosandis. Good evening to all.
And we will start this evening with bid opening for Water and Sewer Chemicals. Madam Clerk, I think we have five or six here.
Call me the company now?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Dean, is this first one the proposal?
Yeah.
Or is this from, nope, it's from-
Should be. I think it's from Har Cross.
Yep, here we go. Could I get to mispronounce all these chemicals? Okay, the first submitting bid is from Har Coast Chemicals in Nashwood, New Hampshire. The proposal bid item number one is for sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon, $3.58 per gallon. Bid item number two is for activated carbon for service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, no bid. Item number three, potassium-
Promanganate.
Promanganate, thank you. Free flowing for the service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $4.7190 per pound. And bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit per price delivered, $3.2300 per gallon. Second proposal is from United Mineral and Chemical Corporation in Lynnhurst, New Jersey. Bid item number one, sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, there's nothing written.
So no bid.
Bid item number two, activated carbon for service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, again, nothing written, no bid. Bid item number three, potassium promanganate. Free flowing for the service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.95. Bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, again, nothing written, no bid. I've got tools there. I could perform, I got my paper cut. Uh, the third, the third one is from Borden and Remington Corporation in Fall River, Massachusetts. Bid item number one, sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, $3.6250. Bid item number two, activated carbon for surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, no bid. Bid item number three, potassium promanganate. Free flowing for the surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.7298. Bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.0831. Fourth proposal is from Coin Chemical in Croydon, Pennsylvania. Bid item number one, sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, no bid. Bid item number two, activated carbon for service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.1929 per pound. Bid item number three, potassium promanganate. Free flowing for the surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.5274 per pound. And bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, no bid. There's two more. This proposal is from Shannon Chemical Corporation in Melvern, Pennsylvania. Bid item number one, sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, no bid. Bid item number two, activated carbon for surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, no bid. Bid item number three, potassium promanganate. Free flowing for the service water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $3.34 per pound with a minimum delivery of 36 pails. Good, okay. Bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, no bid. And the last one. And Madam Clerk, this last proposal is from Univar Solutions, and they're from Morrisville, Pennsylvania. Bid item number one, sodium hydrochloride solution, 15% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, $2.592. Bid item number two, activated carbon for surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, no bid. Bid item number three, potassium promanganate. Free flowing from the surface water treatment plant. Unit price per pound delivered, $2.48. And finally, bid item number four, sodium hydroxide, 25% for the surface water treatment plant and groundwater treatment plant. Unit price per gallon delivered, $2.1837.
Mr. Chair, I move to refer these bids to the Water Sewer Department for their review and recommendation.
Second.
It's motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Can you put this with the pile?
I will. Our next agenda item is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with comment to the select board. We do ask that if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda this evening, you wait till that agenda item comes up. So with that, I will pause for a moment for public comment. And seeing none, we will move forward. Next, we do have a proclamation. Madam Clerk.
Excuse me, I've misplaced it in my packet.
Right here.
I got it.
Oh, yeah.
Exeter Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, 125th Anniversary, December 3, 2022. Whereas Exeter Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, one of approximately 3,000 chapters in all 50 states, the District of Columbia and units overseas commemorates 125 years of service. And whereas the objectives of the National Society, promoting education, historic preservation, and patriotic endeavor through the work of committees functioning at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas the 19 charter members- And whereas the 19 charter members established a firm foundation resolved, the Exeter Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution celebrates its 125th anniversary with reflection and anticipation of continuing service. Now therefore, Mr. Chair, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, to hereby proclaim December 3, 2022, as the 125th anniversary of the Exeter Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, a day of celebration, and urge all citizens within the Town of Exeter to congratulate Exeter Chapter on its 125th anniversary. That was it.
Great, thank you, and congratulations again on the 125th anniversary. And that was held on Saturday, I believe. Last Saturday, the 3rd. Before we move on to the approval of minutes, I'd like to take a moment to recognize that the Town of Exeter was recipient of an award last Thursday evening, and Selectwoman Belanger was in attendance. This was an award given by the Workforce Housing Coalition, and Selectwoman Belanger, you could fill us in.
I would be honored to. So last Thursday, in Portsmouth, was an award ceremony. Workforce Housing Coalition of the Greater Seacoast sponsored this event, put on this event. There were a lot of people who are working on the issue of housing, workforce housing, and so forth. I'm going to list some of the other recipients, but Mr. Sharples did come to accept the award for our municipal, we received the Municipal Leadership Award. Business leadership went to Bangor Savings Bank for all the work they do in helping to finance housing initiatives. And I learned that 100 years ago, when Bangor Savings Bank started, that was the purpose for becoming a bank. Housing leadership went to the Community Action Partnership of Stratford County. Visionary leadership went to Portsmouth Housing Authority. Our very own Exeter Volunteer of the Year went to Jay Childs for his work in this. And then Exeter received the Municipal Leadership Award. And it was rather funny to have Portsmouth saying that they're going to fight Exeter for this award next year. But before Dave and Russ say anything, I just want to, of course, Mr. Sharples, when he got up, he talked about the collaborative effort that the Housing Advisory Committee has had throughout the last few years, especially Rocky and Planning Commission, New Hampshire Housing, people that come to our meetings and work for ways, to try to find ways to make workforce housing a possibility. But of course, he downplayed his role because he gets paid to do a job. I want to recognize that Mr. Sharples, along with many of our other town employees, have a habit of doing this, and I understand it and I appreciate it, but I think it's very important that we, or me as a select board member, and I hope my other members will join me, in saying that, you, Mr. Sharples, you listen to conversations, you listen to questions, you then come back with these innovative ideas, and you approach the planning board with them, the select board with them. Your ability to do that is unparalleled, as far as I'm concerned, and I cannot thank you enough. Housing Advisory Committee is very important to me. I started as a select board member in 2015, and we continue to try to find ways to do things better, invite regional approaches, and your help in that has been invaluable, and the reason I believe why we received the award, the recognition we did, so thank you.
And I'll just say from my seat as Town Manager, Dave has been one of our most innovative employees. He's consistently looking for new ways of doing things and taking some of the more, some of the more complicated policy issues we have, and as you said, Nancy, turning them into action. And I think that that's one of his greatest strengths, and he is more than deserving of this great award, so.
Yes.
Without further ado, I'll hand it to Dave.
Yes, and I, one more thing, because of the work you do, we can make better informed decisions in town, so again, thank you.
Yeah, just, thank you. And unlike the awards, I won't push back on that, so thank you. I do believe it was a collaborative effort, but I do, I do, yeah, I'm good, I'm a good problem solver, I recognize that, and I really appreciate the kind words, and you know, as long as I continue to be here, I will continue to, you know, work and come up with creative ideas from the community. But it is from the community, because I'm not, you know, trying to impose my, you know, my thoughts or ideas on this, so there is some credit that goes to the select board and the Town Manager and Housing Advisory Committee that kind of sets the course, if you will, and then I can, you know, assist with them.
You listen, and then you take those, what you hear, and you find solutions.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Dave, I can't say, say it any better than Selectwoman Belanger, but again, the work that you do for the Town of Exeter is so appreciated, and it's not just within the planning board, the housing, I mean, you touch so many different departments, and you do so in a collaborative way, you are an incredible team player, not to sound cliche, but most importantly, you do it within the finite budget constraints that we have, and that's so appreciated. You're always looking for a way to either save money or find a grant. I don't think anybody finds more grants than your office, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for coming back in tonight to do this with me.
I do treat every buck like it's my own, so I do agree with that, yeah.
You do.
Unless you have to. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger. Okay, next, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first, the regular meeting minutes from November 14, 2022. I would first ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of November 14, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five zero. Excuse me, and then we have the regular meeting minutes of November 21, 2022, and I would ask if there are any amendments or revisions. Seeing none, and I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of November 21, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained.
One abstentions, 401 abstention, thank you. Next, we'll move to appointments. We have an application to nominate Mr. Don Clement for the Exeter Squamscott River Local Advisory Committee. This would be a reappointment for Mr. Clement, and again, this is a nomination to the advisory committee to appoint. So I would seek a motion to nominate Mr. Don Clement for a reappointment to the Exeter Squamscott River Local Advisory Committee.
I would be happy to, is there a time term limit, a term?
This is just a nomination and then a reappointment.
Fine, then I would be happy to nominate.
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Mr. Clement, all the ares.
Motion passes, Mr. Clement, thank you. And it's not in our packet, but I do have a resignation from the Facilities Committee to announce Amanda Kelly has resigned from the Facilities Committee regretfully. I know we all hate to see her go. She was very instrumental in her time, particularly in the last year during the Public Safety Complex discussion, and most importantly, the excellent work she did with the ADA Initiative. So I would ask, I would seek a motion to accept Amanda Kelly's resignation from the Facilities Committee.
Sadly, so moved.
Sadly, so seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes, and thank you, Amanda, for your work, and we hope to see you back soon. Okay, moving into the discussion items, the first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing, the Swayze Parkway side press and deviation petition. Before we move to open the public hearing, I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, the Swayze Park trustees did post a meeting tonight in the event that there was a quorum of two of them here, which I don't see, but they did post it just to make sure, and obviously, they would be welcome to weigh in with public comment once we open the hearing to the public. The legal notice was posted November 15, 2022. Notice of public hearing, Swayze Parkway petition for side press or for deviation relief. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of public hearing on the Swayze Parkway petition for side press or for deviation relief on Monday, December 5, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Novak Room of the Exeter Town Offices. The public is welcome to attend and comment, and again, that was dated November 15. Just so everyone understands, in speaking with counsel, we've been advised that this hearing is required by the side press statute as an informational hearing only. There is no requirement that it be preserved and submitted to the court. As there is no action that is required to be taken at the hearing, there is nothing occurring that would have weight in the court process, and if anybody has questions later when it comes back to the board, we do have Attorney Laura Spector Morgan from Mitchell Group online via Zoom.
Good evening.
Good evening, Laura. So that being said, I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Public hearing is open, and any public that wish to come up and weigh in, just state your name and address for the record.
Take this down. Don Clement, Selma Drive, Exeter. First of all, good evening to the select board members, and good evening to Mr. Dean. I have spent the last few weeks reading and rereading the draft petition to the court for the side press or deviation relief. And after considerable review on my part, it is my opinion that this is based on convoluted reasoning to craft an argument that the original trust is no longer valid. In fact, I believe that the comments in the petition, in the petition paint a false narrative as to the historical purpose and issues regarding the parkway. The main portion of the petition, the main point of the petition is that over the many years, the parkway's existence, there has been a significant increase in commuter traffic in the result of higher vehicle speed. At worst, I believe this is misleading. At best, it's an assumption. And the reason I say this is due to the absence of any data to substantiate that claim. Unless we've been compiling comparative statistics over a period of time, this is all a presumption. If a goal is to show, to slow vehicle speed down, there are various traffic calming methods, such as chokes, speed tables, bump outs, and speed bumps that could be applied. I also believe that the interpretation of Mr. Swayze's intent is subject to debate, but we really can't have that debate because Mr. Swayze is not here to speak to the petition action and consequences. So as a result, I think all of our opinions are irrelevant. The petition states that due to current circumstances, the original purposes of the trust have become impractical, obsolete, ineffective, and are prejudicial to carry out. I contend that discontinuing half of the parkway actually does render the original trust impractical, obsolete, ineffective, or prejudicial. The parkway was created for vehicle use. In conclusion, it's my strong belief that a significant amount of people will be disenfranchised by the prohibition of pleasure vehicles from a section of the parkway. This is an injustice that creates an undue hardship on a certain segment of the population. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could submit this for the official record?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clement. Mr. Hamill?
Good evening, Jerry Hamill, 17 Little Pine Lane. I can understand a lot of people want to have the parkway to walk, enjoy, relax, no cars, and it's understandable. And if this was a piece of land that was done by the town, was bought for, the town paid for everything, I would see, I would say that the merits of that happening would be pretty good. But this is a different scenario. This is a piece of land that was actually given to us by a benefactor with a lot of money, a lot of time, and he had a lot of purpose that he had behind on this parkway. If you look at the original agreement on the parkway, it never says it's to be a park. It says, basically, this is to be the Exeter River Parkway. It's mentioned many times through the whole agreement that it's supposed to be the Exeter River Parkway. Now, the definition of a parkway is a landscaped highway. It's completely different than what the definition of a park is. Now, Mr. Swayze, basically, he was going to defray the cost on building this parkway, and he put, he set forward two different things. And basically, there was, it's to be used solely for park purposes, and the roadway therein open only to pleasure vehicles. Two things that he wanted. Now, he had reasoning behind these two things, and, you know, they could be hearsay, whatever they are, but disagreement, and the whole agreement mentions that as the only emphasis of why he's doing this parkway. He wants it for park purposes and roadway therein open only to pleasure vehicles. Now, when you say something like that, it's, what is the roadway therein? Well, it's the road that's in the parkway, and he wanted that open to, basically, just pleasure vehicles. You have to look at the makeup of the park or the town back in the early 1900s. You had two roadways that actually went onto Newfields Road. Neither one of these roads were pleasant roads. One of them had the gas plant on it, had the town dump on it. The other one, which is going through the parkway, basically had, had some businesses, had, if you look at some of the old books in Exeter, you'll see some of the pictures of what that actually looked like. So, you know, there's a purpose that Mr. Swayze had in having a road there. So I just, I mean, I feel that when something is given to us, and there's a reason why that person sets something, we should follow that. Because why do we, anyone give anything to the town? We don't want the intent being lost. And I think that this intent is being lost, because when you start looking at the agreement that was actually just written up, there's a lot of things that I don't feel are accurate. I think there's the embezzlement, embellishment between everything is just actually huge.
Sorry, what word did you?
Embellishment. You know, embezzled, not an embezzle, but the embellishment.
Embellishment.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Anyways, it's a hard word for me.
That's fine, as long as it's not embellished.
And the older I get, the harder these words are getting for me.
Understood.
But anyways, what I'm looking at is, when you start looking at some of these items that they have, like in line nine, your 10th item, it basically says that the Town Select Board are regarded as the trustees of the trust for the purpose of this. Well, they really aren't unless the trustees have gone and became that, because the Cincinnati Trust was actually the original trust, and they still are. They gave the town the ability to do it back in 1979, but I don't believe we've done that up to this point. I know we haven't as of five years ago. So as far as the trust, I mean, I look at that as being inaccurate. You look at the line before that, and it says that back in the 1930s, let's see, it starts at this gift enabled the town to acquire property. Well, we didn't acquire property because the trust acquired the property. Everything was run through the trust. The trust had the ability to buy, sell, and basically, if it didn't work out correctly, it would have gone back to Mr. Swayze. So I think that some of these things, to me, are not correct. When you start going through, when you go through a little bit further, you start reading things like, you know... things like, you know, and this is basically all he's saying is he wants to use this as a park, but we've got things like here as Bucolic Park, which is a pleasant aspect of countryside and country life. His goal of having Exeter create a place of quiet and serenity, and the enjoyment of natural beauty and roadways. I mean, we've got a lot of this stuff here that really wasn't true. You know, he had a reason to do this. He wanted a way to go home through, to his house that's going to be kind of nice. So a lot of the things, you know, we're embellishing on these things that really aren't correct. I'm looking also, when you look at this whole thing about the Bucolic Park, something that we might want to change, for example, we've, we, let's see, I think it's on item number We refer to Mr. Swayze as Mr. Ambrose. So I think, you know, things like that should be preferred and actually taken care of. So I think that what the town did by doing this, you know, I do have a lot of problems because of, the further we get into it, we'll talk about mobility issues, we're not able to get into this portion of the park anyways. So I think it creates more mobility issues rather than helps them out. And I think one of the big things too is, when you start looking at the part of what the town actually did by vote, is we actually, we are actually keeping all, not all motorized vehicles out of the Parkway. So what does that say for the farmer's market or going to, you know, the bandstand to set up for somebody for a concert? We are basically, by a town vote, we are saying that no motorized vehicles can be in there. So where are we going to ask them to come in with pushcarts? Because, you know, the town, the selectmen can't say, okay, we have the authority to lift that because this is very specific. So I just feel that, you know, I never was in favor of this. I really felt that between the selectmen or the charitable trust or by the lawyers, they would actually look at what this trust really says. And the trust never leads to any of this flowery, you know, embellishment that we actually have. So I'm a little, really kind of put off on that. And I would just hope that you will all take some time to look at the trust and see what Mr. Swayze gave us. Because I know, I feel very weary. I mean, I was with a corporation years ago that gave land to the town. The last thing I would want to see happen is someone in the town decide, we want to build something nice there. Because that's not what we did it for. So I think in a case like this, the park should be left as it is. We should follow what Mr. Swayze wanted and really think on this before we go any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamill. Any other members of the public? Good evening, Mr. Staples.
Good evening. Dwayne Staples, 33 Ashbrook Road, Exeter, New Hampshire. And I am also chairperson of the Swayze Parkway Trustees. I would just, I, again, I'm going to state, my stance on this has always been, I think we should keep this one way. But Mr. Hamill in bringing up the mobility issues, I think is a key element that we all need to look at if we're going to do this. There really are no handicap spaces downtown near the Parkway for handicapped people to access the Parkway. If we close that road off, we're going to close off two spaces that, or two sidewalks that are presently handicapped accessible, even though they're not marked, and we would only have one way down by the lower bridge that, at Norris Brook. We're gonna, we're talking about making that two-way from Newfields Road in to where the block building is. I want to say that we should make some exceptions because we have two parades that do use the Parkway. Christmas Parade, the Memorial Day Parade, along with the farmer's market and people that are going to be setting up at the pavilion for certain events. So I think to say that we're going to close that section of the road from Water Street to Pavilion, to the Pavilion permanently, we really need to stop and take a step back and really look at this. My feeling is we may have moved a little bit hastily without actually taking a lot of time to, to think about these other aspects. So, and if this does move forward, I would hope that we, the Select Board and the Swayze Parkway Trustees can meet and sit down and have conversations about how this should go. So, thank you. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Staples. We have an attendee on Zoom with their hand up, Mr. Bill Campbell. If we could get him led into our meeting, please. Mr. Campbell, can you hear us?
Ah, there, I think. Am I there?
We can hear you, Bill. Can you hear us? Bill, we just heard you a minute ago. Can you hear us? Looks like he's muted.
I tried to, there, I think I'm unmuted now. How are we doing?
Good. Can you hear us?
I can hear you fine.
Great. We can hear you as well, Mr. Bill Campbell.
Thank you. I just wanted to support some of the ideas that Jerry and Don supported and also doing just now. I'm concerned very much with the fact that if we, one of the big ideas is to close the Parkway and have a access only at the north end for people to come in and maybe park three or four cars there. That, I think, would just going to be, make it very hard for older people with walkers or with canes, or younger people with families with two, with two little kids, let's say, to get down to the sort of what I call the best part of the park, which is the park down near the docks and whatnot. Who's, you know, just take a long while to walk from that end down, and you're kind of confined, if, I think, to the north end of the Parkway and a couple of benches that are down there. So I think we need to look at ways of maybe, as Don suggested, maybe slowing the traffic down, but not closing it off. Because people, older people, younger people, very young and very old, I guess, are the ones that like to come in and park and be able to just access the main part of the park from, from the road. So I just think that's a consideration we need, that kind of went by the board somehow when people were voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other members of the public? Mr. Elliott.
Just maybe a question for the lawyer. So Andrew Elliott, 42 Washington Street. Does, does this set any kind of precedent for like future changes? Or is this just strictly what was voted on? Like, by going to court and getting this process completed, does this mean that the board can just change it however they see fit in the future? Or is this just a one?
No, no, no. This, this is part of the process that was voted on in the, in the warrant article.
Okay.
If you recall, the warrant article, the first part of it was the language to close it from one end, et cetera. But the other part of the warrant article explained that if it were passed, it was contingent on going before the charitable trust, which it has.
Gotcha.
And then to the probate court, which it will, once we have this regulatory public hearing. So the select, I mean, we're, we're here to hold this hearing.
Okay.
We're here to listen to the public. If we have any comments to make when we close the public hearing, but we're not, we're not voting. The vote was made by the voters.
Right, right.
So that's the.
And it does not authorize any other changes than what was voted on.
Correct.
Perfect. That's really all I was after. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Elliott. Any other public comment? Or questions? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Public hearing is closed. Can bring it back to the board if there are any comments or questions of Attorney Spector Morgan.
I'll be happy to start, but I wasn't on the board when you guys had this discussion. I would not have voted to put it on the warrant article for, I was one that voted no. I grew up here. I'm very concerned. I will, don't need to repeat everything that's already been said, but I completely agree with everything that's been said. I'm very concerned about our elderly people who drive down that Parkway, and they use our trees to sit under. Some can't even get out of their cars. So it's great for the people who might be able to access it from our, you know, was it 22?
277.
Thank you. 277, sorry. Couldn't think of the numbers. Water Street, but I am very concerned. So I do hope that if this court agrees and this happens, that we do work a little bit more with the Swayze Park Trustees to try to come up with a solution that will take that into consideration. I did have one other question, I think, on the wording of this draft, and that is, the way I'm reading number nine, it says the road borders the parkland and runs from an entrance. It doesn't, to me, that makes it sound like the road is on the outskirts of the park instead of straight down the middle. So I am a little concerned with that hadn't been brought up.
Okay.
And that is it for me. Thanks.
Selectwoman Gilman.
I think I've had the position all along that I didn't want to do this. I agree with the comments that were made, what Selectwoman Belanger has said. What is the next step from this? This is just a draft, so then we can rewrite it before we submit it?
Laura, can you comment on that? The question was, where this is a draft, it will be revised and corrected before it's submitted?
This is a draft, and yes, absolutely. Should the town have any changes that it wants to make to the draft? Those can be communicated to Walter, and he and Russ can discuss them and make such changes as are appropriate.
Thank you.
And then my other question was, the Select Board are regarded as the trustees of the trust.
I didn't write the petition, so I don't know why that's in there or where that came from.
All right. Well, I was just wondering if it shouldn't be the trustees of the trust funds. I know we did bring the trust itself back to Exeter from, from Cleveland, right?
My understanding is that the Select Board are the trustee as outlined in the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Selectwoman Cowan.
Yeah. I mean, I think that we had a pretty robust discussion and hearings, and it didn't seem like there was actually opposition on the board then. I understand and appreciate people's positions. I also understand and appreciate the need to think through changes that are helpful and, and forward thinking. And I do think that the trust allows for us to take possession of this, of this area in our town. And I also think that we have to be thoughtful and realistic about the changes in technology and how that could decrease the enjoyment of pleasure vehicles are different now than they were then. And that could seriously impact the safety of young families, older folks, everybody. There was a, an opportunity for everybody in our town to weigh in. They did. This was not a close vote. This was robustly discussed. And I, I agree, I do think that we have to be really thoughtful and considerate about how we implement some of this stuff. And, you know, we are the stewards of this, of this town, and we are charged with making changes. And people came before the board and said, hey, this is this amazing opportunity. I want my kids to be able to learn how to ride bikes. I want an opportunity to be able to sit and enjoy the Parkway without fear of people driving through. It was really nice during this COVID time to have this, this space that's dedicated in town that isn't a trail. It's, you know, safe and flat for walking. It is good for walkers and mobility stuff. And I feel like we've litigated this. I do think, I appreciate people coming forward and pointing out some of the, the changes. I think we do need to be careful about how we treat the, the people who came before, and we should call, you know, Mr. Ambrose is Mr. Swayze. It's Ambrose Swayze. So we need to make those changes and make sure that we're putting forward our best, most researched face on this document. But I, you know, I, we litigated, we had, we had these discussions, and I appreciate people. I appreciate this, but we had a vote. The vote was very clear and decisive, and I think that we move forward.
Thank you. Selectwoman Row Trioloff.
I have to agree. I thought we had fleshed this out for months.
Yeah.
Before. So I'll leave it at that.
So just, just my final comments. Again, this was a regulatory public hearing as part of the process that was explained on the warrant article. And to think back earlier this year and late last year, and it really began, I believe, in the summer of 21, was the first time that the Swayze Park Trustees were invited to join us. So the first comment I want to make, Mr. Staples, is we, we've enjoyed collaborating with the trustees. And in collaboration means including, I mean, we always haven't agreed on things, but I think it is absolutely pivotal moving forward that regarding the warrant article and other things Swayze Park related, that we continue that collaboration. The Select Board and the, and the Swayze Park Trustees have worked very hard to build a strong working relationship, and I'm committed to continuing that. So moving forward, once this goes through all of the regulatory procedures, you know, the trustees will have a seat at the table with the Select Board. I think that's incredibly important, so I just want to comment to that. And Selectwomen Cowan and Row Trioloff respectively are correct. I mean, we started back in July of 21. We've had multiple Select Board hearings where the public were invited to weigh in, and weigh in they did. And I think personally for me, Selectwoman Cowan was correct during COVID when we Select Board within our authority at the time under the emergency were to close it. It was, it was wonderful for folks, but it was eye-opening for me to hear folks come forward and talk about mobility issues and how it wasn't great. And, you know, when we're up here, we all, you know, we all are citizens, we vote at the polls, but we're here as the Select Board when we walk into the Novak Room, and we're representing the community. And so personal opinions at the end of the day, didn't matter when Selectwoman Cowan made a motion to leave it up, and I'm paraphrasing because it was quite an elegant motion, but Selectwoman Cowan made a motion to leave it up to the voters. And there were four Select Board members at the time. And we all voted 4-0, not to close it or open it, but to put it on the warrant for the voters. And the voters weighed in, and here's what we have. And, and I think that the board at no time has ever said that we're not willing to work with DPW, with the trustees, to try to make this as inclusive for, for all folks. So, I mean, that's, that's where I come from. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate, my concern is, and it was voted, it's done, we're moving on. But I am concerned about our elderly who are handicapped. We talk about ADA all the time. We really need to keep that at the forefront of future. We really need to keep that at the forefront of future decisions if the court grants the town to do this, because that is the next step, my understanding is right?
I believe so, is that correct, Laura?
We have to pass the town, not the court.
Yep. And I think, and I couldn't agree more, Selectwoman Belanger, but I think we go a step forward, and that's, you know, all folks, we want to be as inclusive, all folks with mobility issues, whether they're young, old, or in between, I mean, we need to make sure that we make this so that the community can enjoy it.
Sorry, could I just, Laura, can I ask you, on, I know you said you didn't draft this, and I'm probably making more out of this one sentence than probably is needed, and I'm not a lawyer, but on number nine, the road borders the parkland, am I reading that? I read that as it's on the outskirts instead of down the middle.
I made a note on my copy that it's straight down the middle, and I will raise that with Walter.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Done.
No, I was trying to remember what my question was. I have a question, it's probably for Ms. Specter also. Does this prohibit us from making changes, different configurations, so that the end that, where cars are allowed? I don't personally think that we can just leave a straight piece of road there if we're going to have cars parking and cars trying to get out. There's going to have to be some kind of turnaround.
Well, I think that's part of the next step, once, if and when this is finalized, then, yeah, we're going to have to work.
But what I'm wondering is that, does this prohibit us from doing that?
This would effectuate the vote, which is, I understand, it was to just continue one half of it.
Okay. And then we have a lot of decisions to make after that, which we will do with input from everybody, I imagine, because, what we always do.
Yep.
Okay.
Last thing, Mr. Dean, and if you and Ms. Roy could take the suggestions we've made for cleaning up the draft to Attorney Mitchell, that would be great.
We'll do that.
And Attorney Inspector Morgan, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Of course, thank you for having me.
Terrific, thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night. And I'd like to thank the public, both in person and virtually, that weighed in this evening.
I agree, I think that we have come up with a really, a good compromise that takes into account a lot of the opinions and issues that people have brought up. And without that, we wouldn't have had such a good result, so thank you all very much. This was supported by voters with over 60% of the vote, it was 62% of the vote.
Could I just add one more thing? So I just want to make sure, people at home who I know are listening, when I got back on the board in March, I've had people come up to me or reach out to me about this vote, and I've explained it to them, to the best of my knowledge. So please just remember what you just heard tonight about your concerns, on which end of the parkway may be opened or closed, and come and be part of that discussion in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Coleman, yeah?
Thank you for the discussion. Question is what the next steps are. My understanding is, the proposed, you'll make, the select board will make some changes and give them to the attorney, who will make changes to the draft. What happens next? The draft isn't submitted to, I mean, the new draft is submitted to the court?
To the probate court, correct, Mr. Dean?
It does not come back for a public hearing? So the public does not get a chance to comment on the changes to the draft?
My understanding is, this was the regulatory hearing. You know, we've gone through, we've listened to the public, we've talked amongst ourselves. Mr. Dean will work with Attorney Mitchell to make the corrections, and then, it's my understanding, Mr. Dean, that it's filed with the court, correct?
Correct.
So we're under no obligation to come back.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, we have the Chair of the Budget Recommendations Committee, Mr. Bob Kelly, here to review the highlights, suggestions, and challenges that the BRC so carefully vetted during their deliberations from September through just a few weeks ago. So, good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Nico, and the rest of the board, thank you for having me. I'll try to be brief, I think the report is fairly self-explanatory. We tried to provide as much information as always to help you along your way towards looking at the budget, the preliminary budget. We had 10 members this year. We met from initially our kickoff meeting in August, early August, and we met through November 17. We met eight times with multiple subcommittee meetings. So I think the various members were thoroughly familiar with the budget, the issues, and we feel pretty confident that we have thoroughly vetted all of the different funds as well as the capital improvements program. I would like to highlight a couple of, some of the decisions that we made along the way, just for your edification, just to give you some background instead of just throwing sentences out there. The first, I think, really important items are two positions that we recommend. I know adding positions in the town of Exeter, lived here over 35 years, it's always a dicey proposition. We, as a town and the staff, do an amazing job of doing more with less. It's the way it is, not necessarily the best way, but, you know, the town does a great job and is one of the best towns in the state, if I do say so. But we, it was felt this year that a part-time human resources assistant would be, was requested and by the town manager and the assistant town manager, who feels very strongly that this person would lighten the workload in view of increased human resources issues legally and personally. So we, we supported the funding of this part-time person. Another position that was requested by Public Works, that would be funded 60% by the general fund and 20% each by the water and sewer fund, was, is a geographic information systems, or GIS. They called it a technician, realistically, it's more of a resource manager. We do currently collect a lot of GIS data out in the field with our various drainage and water and sewer facilities, but there's no real mechanism right now for putting that onto a hard copy, a drawing, or some sort of specification, so that there's, you know, some of our decisions and some of the data is memorialized. So we felt it was very important to get this person on board. Most of the communities of a similar size and in the seacoast area have had a GIS manager for multiple years, and we felt it was time to add this to our staff. So those were the two staff recommendations that we had. Another key issue in our view is the, on the water side, being an older town with an older system, a lot of the piping is currently lead-based, which has some significant health issues. The DES and US EPA have requested that we have a plan, that everybody in the country has a plan by the end of 2024. And DPW felt because of labor shortages on staff, as well as a limitation on consultants who can help us with this work, we felt it was worthwhile to get going on that earlier. We do have a grant possibility that would defray the cost. It was like an $80,000 planning project, at which point we would have a recommendation on how, this isn't an implementation, this is just how are we going to deal with lead pipe in our water system? So we felt it was worthwhile getting ahead of that instead of waiting until next year. Another item on the water side was to replace, expand our, be a little bit more aggressive on our meter replacement program. As we've said multiple times, the meters are the town's cash register. If they're running correctly, then we get the money that we're supposed, the revenue we're supposed to get for water used and the sewer aspect of that. If the meters slow down, then obviously the town is losing money. So we still have over 1,000 units, according to DPW's records, that are over 10 years old. 10 years is about the general lifespan of a meter, so we're hoping to bump up that rate so that within the next few years, we can have relatively new meters. On the sewer side, there was a capital outlay request that we thought was very, very creative, that we, as you know, we built a $55 million wastewater treatment plant a few years ago. We do receive septic tank pumpings, and it's a very, fairly outdated system with, we don't, the bottom line is, we don't make as much revenue as we should on this service. We're one of the only communities in our, in our area that takes septic. And so the town would like to, the Public Works would like to beef up this facility with some data collection that would increase our revenue. So this would be, it was going to cost about $125,000 to make or to build, and DPW estimates that the revenue on an annual basis would be about $300,000. So we thought this was an excellent use of capital outlay funds. We did attach in the packet the list of 22 projects and vehicles that we deliberated on as part of the CIP program. Not all of them were approved, but as, you know, from previous years of me being here, all of the projects are worthwhile. The town department heads do a really nice job of really, you know, almost waiting until the last minute to present projects. Nobody is, we've heard the needs versus wants. Most of the CIP items these days are needs, not just, oh geez, I'd like to do something. So we took them all very seriously. A couple, really ones that I'd like to highlight, the proposed police station with a fire substation component on Continental Drive. The original, I think you guys looked at it through various public meetings, it was about a 15.9 and change million-dollar project. Through some comments from the public at various hearings, one of which you had, there was an interest in trying to make that a net-zero energy facility. Since we're going to have it for the next 40 or 50 years, like we have the existing one, we thought it'd be worthwhile to really try to be current with our energy usage. So that added about 300 and change onto it. So we recommend that the final warrant article be $16.3 million for the police station and fire substation to include a net-zero energy design component. We also supported the Westside Drive Drainage, Water, and Sewer Improvements Project. I've been doing this for a number of years, and about 10 years ago, we started with these various catchment areas around town. JD Hill was the first project, we did that a number of years ago, and worked brilliantly as far as taking unwanted water out of the sewer system to reduce the impacts on that facility. Westside Drive will be the second major project, we hope it has a similar success rate. It's about a $6 million project, it's not inexpensive, but the savings of the JD Hill project over the years have been more than worthwhile. We're hoping that this would be very similar. Under that, we talked about, or we actually are in the middle of a groundwater source development project. We, the town approved $1 million last year to continue that effort. The DPW was looking for about $6 million this year. We felt it was premature to start looking at construction costs and things like that, since we don't even really have a well site yet, that's to be done in 2023. So we did reduce that significantly, basically by about 90% or so, to $500,000, where they, you know, could continue to do the work that they need to do, keep the momentum going. And if the well investigation that they have their eye on works out, then we can continue that design work in 2023. And then probably next year, we'll have a warrant article for construction of whatever facilities we deem necessary. But we, again, we thought it was premature to do that this year. The other vehicle that was somewhat controversial, our subcommittee initially recommended against it, was the DPW Vector truck. It's the big stainless steel tank truck that drives around town and cleans out catch basins and things like that to keep us in compliance with the MS4 drainage requirements. They're about $550,000 a pop. The one we have is only about eight years old, it was purchased by the town in 2014. They're not inexpensive. The problem is, much like the FireEngine last year, they're 12 to 18 months out on an ordering basis. So we felt that if we waited until next year, and right now, maintenance costs are fairly low, and it's still in really good shape. But we felt like if we waited until next year and maybe, you know, it was going to be at least another year, year and a half out from there, then we're starting to push it for the maintenance costs. Another pitch that Public Works made is that if we had two vehicles, that that would actually work out very well, because the one that we have is being used quite aggressively. We'd like to get 15 years out of it, even though the useful life is generally around eight to 10 years. So we thought that having a second vehicle, and I think in discussing with the town manager, you know, we thought that the money we get for these things, even though it's only eight years old and it's a $550,000 vehicle, we're probably going to get less than 50 grand on it on a trade-in. So we felt it was more worthwhile to have it in our fleet than to sell it and get that money back. So that was the thinking. It ended up being a 10-nothing unanimous vote for that truck, even though the initial assessment was that we didn't need it quite yet, but the Public Works made a nice little plea. We did provide sort of a table of year-over-year expenses. I think, you know, we've done a pretty nice job on your behalf, reduced the CIP. In many cases, the only increase was on the water side, and that was due to the portion of the Vector truck that would be allocated towards that. The budgets have, you know, have been in that 2% to 2.5% over the years and increases. And, you know, water and sewer funds have gone up more precipitously, mostly because of regulatory initiatives that are somewhat beyond our control, and we're just trying to respond to those directives, so. I'll certainly entertain any questions on behalf of the committee, but that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Before we get into questions, I just wanted to acknowledge, I think I came to all the meetings but two, and the two I missed, I watched on TV. Your deliberations were thoughtful, careful. Your conversations were incredibly robust, and I thought you asked some tough questions of department heads and the town manager. So thank you on behalf of the board, and I just want to acknowledge the committee this year, 2022, Liz Canada, Ed Contreras, Kathy Corson, Andrew Elliott, Anna Grazer, Chris Newport, Dr. Judy Rowan, Christine Suter, Chris Zigmont, and Dr. Ton Swan, and thank them all for their dedication and hard work over the last couple of months. So with that, Selectwoman Belanger, we can start with you, if you have any questions?
No, like you, I went to, I think I missed one, and it was, I always enjoy the budget process. It's kind of nice this year to be sitting on the hall, listening and stuff.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't nice. We wanted you over in the corner.
Oh, thank you. No, I really don't have any questions, you all covered it. I was particularly fascinated by the conversation that Liz Canada had brought up about one of the positions and the pay rate and things. That was fascinating to listen and listen to the whole conversation and working through the process. So, no, I just, will repeat what our chair said and thank everyone who volunteers in the Budget Committee. It's a few months, but it's an intense few months, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Well, I have the same comments, I really appreciate the whole committee, excuse me, the process that you go through. And really, and thank you for the highlights, because that's easier for us to explain what are the highlights, because we know what we want. And just for the public, the actual line-by-line budget is posted with our agenda, so if people want to look at that and have questions, be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have anything to add that my colleagues haven't already said, other than to thank everybody for their work. It is a really great way to be involved and become really familiar with how the town functions. And I would say that a budget is our priorities, and I am really thankful for the work that goes into this. goes into this.
Selectwoman Ratrioloff?
Thank you.
So in our packet, we do have the line-by-line budget after the revisions and amendments by the BRC. So we will have, I would say, three select board meetings probably before the budget hearing, the third Tuesday in January. So I would ask the board, I'd like to have this on the agenda for all of our select board meetings running forward as a standing discussion item. If everybody could go through this, I know those of us that attended or watched the meetings, we've made some notes, we've got some suggestions or talking points, but if we could just go through the budget and bring back any suggestions, revisions, or even questions, and we can get back to Mr. Kelly, if there are any. That's our homework assignment.
Okay.
Any closing thoughts, Mr. Kelly?
No, I thank you for acknowledging the members of the committee. I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but you know, it was a very good committee this year. We had some very, we had a good mix of people who've been on for a number of years, and then some new blood, which is great. They bring a new, fresh perspective on what it means generally as a younger person to live in the challenges of living in the town of Exeter or even moving to the town of Exeter. So, you know, it is a good process to sort of see what goes into spending close to $30 million a year and what we get for that. So it's a nice process. I appreciate working with you folks, and like I say, my committee was top-notch this year.
Great, thank you.
May I?
Hmm?
To follow up with what you just said, one of the things that I always find wonderful about the budget process and having new people on is that they, I find, as I was one of them once upon a time, you're always almost embarrassed or hesitant to ask questions, and it's always encouraged to ask those questions. No one's ever said, told, or made to feel silly for asking questions. And we're really trying so hard to communicate better, get the information out there to people better. And those questions that people ask do that. They help with that. So, yeah, thank you. Every year, you've, how many years? Can we add that in there? How many years have you been doing this?
This is number 14.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
And thank you to the board. To Dr. Rowan and Mr. Elliott from the committee for coming out tonight and supporting the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just take a minute and acknowledge also our Finance Director, Corey Stevens, who's in the back of the room and did a fantastic job of sort of going through all the numbers and making sure that things were plugged in in the right spots. And Laura Zagopoulos in our Finance Department, who also is a big backstop to the budget process.
Yes, Mr. Stevens, this was your first year behind the computer.
Chris and Laura did a phenomenal job supporting you and Ms. Roy in the committee. And I really want to commend Mr. Stevens because there were many meetings where he was ready to vote.
And we would have counted it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So our next discussion item is a grant acceptance request from our town engineer, Paul Velasch. The town this year is a recipient of the New Hampshire DES American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, grant for the Exeter Reservoir Dam. This dam is rated as a high-hazard dam, and the determination was reconfirmed by a breach analysis back in 2016. The dam is currently unable to meet the required discharge capacity. And the grant funds would support feasibility study to develop alternatives, conceptual designs to bring the dam into compliance. I know this has been a priority for the River Advisory Committee for at least the last year, if not more. This grant is for $172,000. This will fund 100% of the study. Mr. Velasch is in the process of reestablishing a UEI number, which would be required to receive the grant funds. The town will need a vote of authorization to accept the grant, and thus, he's bringing it to the board. And I'd first open it up to any questions or comments.
Right.
Okay. And if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to authorize acceptance of the state ARPA grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $172,000 to the town of Exeter, and to authorize the town manager to sign the associated paperwork with such agreement on behalf of the town for the Exeter Reservoir Dam.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. She passes 5-0. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I will turn over the next discussion item to us, our second reading for the Sewer Use Regulations Town Ordinance. I believe you spent quite a bit of time in our last meeting reading through the changes. I'm not sure that's necessarily necessary tonight. Mr. Dean, can we just, any suggestions, the clerk to?
I was just going, my thought was to just highlight what's highlighted in the index of Chapter 15, that that's where the changes are occurring.
Is that suggestion of brevity acceptable?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
All yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so here's the, is this public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing on the town ordinance, second reading for Sewer Use Regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is open to the public. Much like last week, the public has departed, so I would entertain a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is closed. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I didn't actually read it before the public hearing. Mr. Chair, I would move to, is this our third hearing?
No, this is the second.
Okay. So the hearing on this changes to our sewer regulations, Chapter 15 in our town ordinance as sewer regulations. There are various changes throughout that have been made to update our regulations to new state standards. And I am only going to read the titles of the chapters and their subchapters that have been changed. One is under 1508 Pretreatment of Wastewater, added information about amalgam separators. And Section 1516 Septage Disposal, and added language for septic hauler requirements, temporary septic permits, septic permits, and septic disposal charge. I believe that is it. Okay.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. We'll revisit this for the third reading on the 19th. Our last discussion item is a continuation of last time we were together. This was based on the ongoing work that we've done looking at a comprehensive review of the boards and committees. And you'll note changes based upon our discussions. I'll highlight them. The first was under vacancies. Selectwoman Gilman had talked about formalizing language so that if somebody leaves, is not appointed, or resigns, that an alternate would be considered first to be moved up to a permanent member, and then we would recruit an alternate. The other change was under committee membership. Selectwoman Gilman, again, found a typo, so we've changed the word to quorum. And the last change was based on Selectwoman Belanger's recommendation on the goals and objectives being moved from the beginning of the year to by June 30th. I believe I captured all of the suggestions.
Can I, one of the ones that I thought we talked about, but I'm not, I couldn't remember, is attendance, we were going to include alternates.
That's true.
Yep, we can add that.
And where's the goals and objectives orientation? Procedures, under new member appointee orientation, training will be provided on RSA 91A, which is the non-public meeting rules.
Right to know.
Right to know laws, yes. Town policies and procedures. Some boards have their own rules of procedure, and I know the Historic District Commission does, and it lays out, it basically is the selectmen's meeting procedures, that application is presented, commentary from the public, commentary from the board. Then, it's a little old-fashioned, but it can be sir rebuttal. But it's about 10 different things, and I don't know if any other, maybe the land use boards, other land use boards have them. Something that was required when we went for certified local government designation.
And it's talked about earlier in the, no, but to your point, it could be added again. We do talk about certain land use boards where some of this is not applicable, but we could highlight that in the beginning and just make that more out there for folks to understand. Because we do talk about, for instance, with the term limits and some of the others, that land use boards are prohibited from that, I believe. Goals and objectives as well, obviously, you know, that would be different for land use boards.
I know on the planning board, when I became an alternate, I don't know, four years, three, four years ago, literally, I got, and it had the policies, procedures, all of it in there, because that's regulated as some of yours by RSA's and things, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I'm just saying.
Orientation isn't, but yeah.
The orientation isn't, but to make sure that they, we all understand the policies, procedures, and things, it's really important.
Site plan regulations.
Oh, gosh. Mark tomorrow morning?
So I think in the intent, you know, obviously, you know, we can include that, but I think when Selectwoman Ratrioloff and I met several times, we were looking at the committees where there are no regulatory, where folks are just thrown out to try to figure it out. We would like to be able to assist them and make improvements.
Yeah, I think it's very important. Thank you.
So I will take this back, include the alternates and attendance, and I can put something in the beginning, again, about regulatory.
And I apologize.
No, that's why we do this.
I think that's just last time, but on the vacancies, could we consider adding something to the effect that the chair will make the recommendations to the select board?
You didn't miss it because it wasn't there. I added that based on our conversation.
Oh, thank you.
And is the chair making recommendations for?
The chair of a committee or what, should really let the select board know via email or communication about appointing somebody under vacancies.
We can memorial, I mean, I think they do typically, but we can memorialize that.
Yeah, but I think it's a good idea to make sure that they understand it's a responsibility to do that.
Sure. Okay. Any others?
Well, we had, we had talked about having a more formalized report for the select board from these meetings. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put it in. But if we're talking about, if we're going to talk about committees and the functions of them, maybe we can include our agreement with the boards as well. So what I think we would want to do, or what I'm looking for, is a more formalized report so that we are not missing things that we need to communicate with our colleagues on this board. We have a form or a Google Doc or something that you just, you know, date of meeting, you know, here's the link to the agenda, you know, something so that there's a more formalized practice. Because I think we've had a couple of instances of not catching pretty significant issues before they come explode before the board in a rather public way. So I think if we had something that we are all accountable to, it just jogs our memory more. And it would be, you know, sort of going two ways. So we're asking the committees to professionalize a little bit, and then we are also professionalizing a little bit.
So can I just ask a clarification question? Would it be for the packet? And the reason why I'm asking is, so Thursday night, I could get home at 10 o'clock from a planning board meeting. It would give me a very small window of opportunity to get my, to add that to my.
I don't think it would necessarily be for the packet.
I mean, I'll do it if that's what we decide to do.
No, I know, but Nancy, like you do a really nice job of organizing, okay, here's what we talked about.
Yeah, I figured it out.
Yeah, and I don't do that. So I am totally reliant on my memory. And so if there was like, okay, here is someplace, you know, a Google Doc or whatever, that's like three or four questions that none of us have to recreate, but there's some sort of memorialized, you know, here's what happened, here's, so like, Russ or Melissa can be like, hey, you forgot to, you know, you had mentioned that this thing came up in the REC Advisory Committee. Do you want to say, like, I just, I think that, you know, if we're asking for them to professionalize a little bit, we should also be stepping it up a little bit, too.
Oh, I 100% agree.
In a way that I would really.
And I will do what I need to do to do it. I'm saying, if that's what you have in mind, I'm fine with that.
I don't think it's for the packet necessarily, but I do think it's sort of a record of like, this is what happened in the meeting from our perspective, so that if the meeting minutes from the committees, you know, because some of them, we have Joanna, some of them we don't, some of them we are, you know, we are taping, some of them we don't, you know, so there's not this thread of accountability and professionalization, which I think is what everybody would benefit from.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think that's a great idea, and it might help out at least the Heritage Commission because the planning board approved a project that involved demolition, and then they came to the Heritage Commission to see if they could demolish the part they wanted to demolish. And that's flipped.
Right, and so.
It's always, those three land use boards, the Planning, HDC, and Heritage, never have a distinct process.
Yeah. And I think that we could probably do with, you know, we're making some pretty big decisions for the town, and we're asking committees to make some pretty big decisions and recommendations for the town. And then if there are problems, which there of course inevitably are, it's not like, well, nobody knew about it, so, you know, we've wasted everybody's time and now everybody's mad, instead of like, okay, can we catch it, you know, three steps back from the problem.
And at the same time, today's conversation, you know, we can say we met this many times.
This many times, yeah.
I agree, and I understand your concern about that. I felt not having been part of the board and having people come to me, I needed to speak about that.
Understood.
But can I ask, is there a reason why we don't have somebody that's assigned to the zoning board?
It's a law. It's a quasi-adjudicial body, so none of us can be on it.
Well.
No, it's.
No, 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 well, it's a voting. Okay, okay. I just thought it was odd because it's really important. I have to try to watch them all for the planning board, because it perhaps may be for the planning board for what's coming ahead, so I just.
Yeah, at one point, we had a process where planning and building was sending out the agendas for each land use board to each member of the boards, so we could review them and, you know, just at the agenda level to see if we had anything in common.
Yeah, I just have them in my calendar.
That hasn't happened for a couple of years now.
Okay. So Molly, can I go back to, because I love the idea, I'm just a little missing something, I think, on how do you want to proceed, how would you propose we proceed to do it for ourselves, not for the packet?
I don't know, I don't, I mean, my goal here isn't to create additional work to go in the packet necessarily. My goal is to create a trail of like, these are the things that happened, these are the threads that need to be connected, let's try to catch them before we've gone so far down the path with anything that we're going to cause problems because this board hasn't looked at it, or we don't know about it, or this fight is happening, or whatever.
I mean, it also solves some of the issues that we've discussed with meetings that don't take place, you know, how many meetings that were proposed? If you're tracking, you know, a meeting that's put on for a time and then the day of the meeting is canceled, how many times is that happening? How many times do we have people from certain committees that leave the committee within a certain timeframe? I think, you know, we need to, we have sort of anecdotal conversations about it, but there's no tracking method to say. there, there's no tracking method to say this particular committee had to cancel 60% of their meetings.
Because there's not a quorum.
Because, right.
That's the, the Communications Advisory Committee. Right, and you know, this committee is saying, yes, let's raise some money for the part, you know, for the pickleball, and that might cause some trouble. And this committee is, you know. So I just think if we could at least memorialize some of this stuff, so it's not, I don't, I mean, I'm not interested in creating a huge amount of work. I'm not interested in creating a huge report. I think if we have something like a Google form, which is, you know, we don't have to administer, it's just, you know.
Bullet points.
Right, like what meeting did you go to? There's a dropdown. What was the date you can put it in? Who, you know, who, was there a quorum, yes or no? What was the link to the agenda? You can link the agenda, you know.
When was the meeting requested?
Right, like, you know, did anything major get discussed?
Well, who fills it up?
Us.
We do.
Okay, yep, okay. Because, because we're the ones who are repping these committees.
Right.
And then, oh, it turns out I can never go to a meeting on Tuesday? Well, somebody else has to be assigned, you know. We can maybe catch some of these problems before they're huge problems.
That's good.
So for me, I think that's a great idea. And I know we had sort of chatted about that. And I think we should move forward with that. I think that at least what I took out of when we started this exercise was, you know, we have a, a running memo here with some bullet points that I thought once we finalized them, we could then in turn translate them into our committee policies that we have as a town policy. And then I think taking Selectwoman Cowan's idea and incorporating that into, in our, in our book of policy and procedure, incorporating that into the select board policies and procedures. And maybe that's something, you know, we could spearhead making up that form of what's it going to look like and.
Right.
Again, making it.
Make it printable.
It's not for the packet, it's for when we do our select board committee reports. And I think exactly to capture.
Right.
How many times, you know, because we, anecdotally, we didn't meet. There wasn't a quorum. Or it was three weeks ago, what did, what did we talk about? I think it just, it will allow all of us to be able to represent the work that the committee did, what we took out of it. And as you brought up, is there anything hot that we need to know about?
Yeah.
Right. So you know, the only reason I asked if it was printable, that way I don't have to do my own Word doc. I, I would just do it in a form that is devised and so that, and then I can just print that up. I have to write all that stuff out because it's all important, I think, and that's the only way I'm gonna, I, I can't sit here and.
Unless I misunderstood, it's an informal.
No, I think, yeah.
It's a tool, it's a resource.
I think it's a tool and it's, I think it can be, it, it is a way to loop our, our employees in without tasking them with a big project of their own. They can, you know, re, oh, you know, were there a bunch of meetings this week? Let me pull up the spreadsheet of what happened. Are there things that we need to bring up in our department head meeting, like, you know?
I think that's a great idea.
Right, and I've run into problems with how many, how many meetings of conservation?
Is it for you guys or for departments?
I think it's, I mean, it's, well, it's, it's for the board, but it's like, it's a way that everybody can at least know what's happening without having to, you know, because we go to all these meetings, we're supposed to report on them anyway. It's a, it's a tool that you can.
No, no, you had me until you were like, and then the department heads could look, so I didn't know if we would give.
No.
I, I'm, I was hearing it as a tool amongst yourselves.
I would say.
Russ and I then go through and see what department needs to be notified of, of what?
Well, it would, it would be like, so before, you know, before a big bruhaha erupts with the, with, with REC, for example, like, oh, you know, we're, we're doing something with pickleball, like, wait, let me check in on that. Especially if that doesn't rise to the level of, you know, of whatever, or, you know.
Yeah, the Google Doc's super easy.
Yeah.
It, it would take me an hour, not even. It's not, that's not a big deal, I'm just trying to figure out who you want access to, and then I can send out a draft for you guys.
The select board members.
Well, the select board members, and then it's, it would just.
Google Sheet.
Yeah, it's a, right.
It just, yeah, so you put it in on a Google form, we do the dropdowns, make it easy, and it will collate all of it in a Google spreadsheet, looks like Excel.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I, I think, and that's fine, I mean, whatever, however it works internally, but Selectwoman Gilman's correct, I mean, it should be a resource for each of us. It shouldn't be something shareable because then that could get into right to know issues.
So that's, so that, that's sort of where I was going with this. So a Google Doc that you can all see, but you can't edit, then you can all review it, but you can't edit it.
But don't you want it to come like?
Well, let's see about this. So if there's a right to know.
So it could go all out to you as long as you don't discuss it and respond to it. You can review it.
Right, because it's like.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's like the information that we would share publicly anyway.
Exactly. So you guys would all have access to view this Google Doc, you would not have access to edit it, because then there could.
Or comment.
Right, there would be discussion.
Or a con, right, a conversation, yeah.
So.
I would just, yeah, I would just want to be real careful that, you know, if, like, let's say it, it's something where all five of us can review it and not edit before the select board meeting, like, you know, Selectwoman Cowan writes what she did at the REC Advisory Committee, we review it, we don't edit it or comment, but I run into Selectwoman Belanger and we start talking about it. I mean, that's.
Did you read Molly?
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Molly's report.
So I was thinking maybe of having as, as a tool, a resource for each of the five board members to work on, and then we just bring it when we do our select committee reports, it's there and.
So not something that's collaborative or, or in a digest form for the.
I'm only concerned about.
No, I understand.
No, I like the idea of it being more interactive and that, you know, after your meeting, it doesn't have to be the next day, but it can be.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
Before our next meeting.
I thought, I'm fine with putting it in the packets, but my, my concern is, as I was thinking that before it got too far.
Yeah.
I thought, wow, what would I be putting myself in for? A lot of the time I have a Thursday night planning board meeting and a Friday morning housing advisory committee.
Everyone's schedules are different.
Right, everyone's schedules are different.
And then I have to run to the office and catch up and.
Yeah, no, well, and I don't, I don't want it to be something that is cumbersome or burdensome. I do want it to be a useful tool so that we are professionalizing the, the content that we bring here, and we can catch some of the issues that are inevitably going to come up because we're asking a bunch of volunteers to do real work for the town.
Wouldn't this not be any different than you guys all informing each other by sending an email out where you say, you know, do not respond or, or what's the difference? There's no.
You're not supposed to do that.
We don't really do that.
Well, you can as long as you.
Well, I mean, but it lead, no, it can lead, I mean, that's why, like, for me, if I need to communicate with the other four board members, I have Russ do it.
Right.
So that brings me to the question, I, I am thinking about an annual report kind of form that I have to do for the Heritage Commission. And it's a format where they ask, you know, this isn't necessarily what we want to track, but have we added new members over the last year? What projects have you done? Have there been this many demolitions, that kind of thing? So, and that's specific to that committee. So I'm wondering if we can't cover a lot of things with one form that actually gets printed? I, I don't know, it doesn't mean, it doesn't get you where you want to go.
Can I just throw a thought, because this is, I, I didn't know this was coming up? Just one thought of if there was a form, we could fill it out on our own, and once we were done with it and we submitted our reports, we could then put it into a database of some sort, I don't know. I, I, I'm just thinking, because I know where Molly, I think I know where you're going with this, you want us to be more specific in our reports, more detailed, if that's the better way of putting it, but we need to have a place where we can go to look at even our previous reports in case something red flags for us.
Mm-hmm.
It would really be helpful. So is there something that we could take our report? I already typed mine, so it doesn't matter if I type it in Word doc or in a Google doc, and then we can put it somewhere where we have access to it if we want to go back.
I, I think it's doable to have a Google Sheet and have committees.
Not be editable.
Right, you're just, you're just reading it, just like you're reading the packet.
But who puts in the data?
You guys.
We do.
We do.
You would.
So only the person writing the Google Doc can edit it? I mean, you, you're writing it.
So you're.
It's like adding a piece to a report.
You're, you're going into a Google form, question one, committee, dropdown, let's pick it up. Was there a quorum, yes, no, blah, blah, blah. You know, then there's a paragraph, write the key bullet, bullets. It takes the form, you hit submit, it goes into a Google Sheet, which is the same thing as Excel. So then now you can go back and say, hey, I'd like to look at all the Heritage Commission notes. You can look at it, but you can't comment on it, you can't edit it, you can only review it. It basically becomes, because I can set that up, that you guys can only view it. So, you know, I think at that point, it's just like if you guys walked down the street and saw each other and started talking about something. That becomes incumbent upon you guys to follow the 91A rules.
Right.
Because I'll tell you, when the Heritage Commission thing came up, I spent a lot of time going through all the agendas.
Mm-hmm.
Before I even tried, then I had to go and, you know, flag the meetings and find them in the meeting, and so it might help when we want to look up.
Mm-hmm.
An issue, a specific issue.
And we can do a few different drafts, you guys can take a look and see what it works for you and that kind of stuff, but I think, I think what you're looking at is something that informs the five of you.
As individually, yeah.
And is it a tool for reviewing what's happening or what had previously happened, right? It's your sort of a quick.
That's right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's really where that would land.
I like the idea.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
So if we can, if I could suggest, I'll clean this back up for committees. We can get that in to our policy book once we all agree to everything. And then in the meantime, for the select board, because it's totally different.
Yep.
For the select board, then you can bring a couple of ideas encompassing what Selectwoman Cowan suggested.
Yep.
Does that work for the board?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your input, everyone. Okay, regular business, Madam Clerk, we have several abatements in a solar exemption.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an abatement for MAP 11, Lot 5, Unit 30, in the amount of $173.88 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 957, in the amount of $4.93 for tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 1000, in the amount of $17.90 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
And then I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 21, Lot 20, in the amount of $20,500 for tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Thank you, there are no permits and approvals this evening, Mr. Dean?
Yes, I had a few things tonight. One is that tax bills are due December 30th. In case anyone was wondering, you should have received them in the mail by now, so they're out there. The Health Trust held its annual meeting at the Center for Triangle Park last Thursday. I was able to participate in that and elect some new board of director members, so that was a good, a good event. The, we've already started the town meeting warrant, so that's already underway based upon the budget and, and the known articles that we're seeing come through. I wanted to compliment the Assistant Town Manager again, who's continuing to work with the DOL on their audit process. She's smiling, which is great. It's been a hard process, but the DOL went through many buildings last week and they included the town offices in the town hall, so we are beginning to get, I think, the theme I would say is as the, the audit continues, we're getting better and better remarks from DOL. So they seem to be happy with how we're handling ourselves with that. And a lot of that credit goes to Melissa and the staff that has been very responsive and, and working on the issues that DOL has brought up. The DPW Director process continues, we're in the midst of references right now, so we are getting down to the end of that process, which is a good thing. And the holiday parade, I just wanted to indicate my thank you to the organizers of the parade. It was a very well put together event. The weather held off for us, which was nice, and had a really great time, so just wanted to say thank you to all those who make that possible. And then my final note is I'm heading to Arizona this Wednesday, and I'm going to be visiting my brother down in sunny Arizona, and I'll be back on Monday, the 12th.
Great. Safe travels.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, select board committee reports, I'm not sure how many we have, but Selectwoman Rantioleff, do you have any?
I don't have any reports.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
I do. I went to the REC Advisory Committee and we had a presentation from Chris Sigmont from the Single Use Plastics, and we had a robust discussion. There was no action, but it was certainly a robust discussion. Chief, among the points were, people largely seemed in favor in theory of a policy like that, and then also really, really leery of saddling the concession stand with that kind of responsibility, because we fund the pool operations with that money and want to create a sustainable environment in our town, largely, again, this was the, the feedback, but also want, want significantly more funding from the town in order to run the different operations and, and have a, have a sustainable organization that doesn't necessarily depend on concession sales.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, all I had was a Facilities Advisory Commission. We interviewed remotely three firms to conduct the facilities conditions assessment that the voters had approved for $45,000. Two great firms came out, one really topped the ticket. And because one of the reasons, one of the reasons they're staying under cost, I, they didn't say this, but that's my assumption, is that it's a national firm and they won't charge us for somebody traveling in from California who's a specialist in this or that part of a facility. So that kept the cost within what, what we can pay them. So the next step is for the full, we didn't have the full committee there, it was just a, a couple of us, and I can't vote, so then the full committee had.
Is this like a subcommittee type thing to?
Yeah, for, for interviews, yeah. And Mr. Sharples is going to look at references and then bring it back to the full committee before they come to us.
Great. Thank you. Selectwoman Belanger?
I actually do not have one.
Wow.
However, I, I would like to say again, thank you to the parade volunteers who.
downtown looks beautiful.
Who literally every year give us a wonderful parade with smiles on their faces. I don't know how many people realize this, but not everybody, actually, I think almost the majority of the people who volunteered to do that parade do not live in town anymore. They used to, or they had connections, but they still every year volunteer a lot of hours to put the parade on. And thank you to Exeter TV for the photos and the videos of the Festival of Trees, because I was in Portsmouth at the award ceremony. I missed it this year, but I at least got to see everyone's wonderful photographs and videos. So thank you to all the volunteers who pulled that off too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I did not have any. I did not have any committee meetings. The Sustainability Advisory Committee was scheduled to meet tomorrow evening. However, I spoke with the Vice Chair this morning. They were having a hard time getting a quorum. Had a long discussion with him about the importance of them meeting before December 19th. So they rallied to meet next Monday, December 12th. And I will plan to be there along with Kristen Murphy as we review the ongoing single use plastic policy. Had an opportunity to attend the parade as well. And again, thank you to the volunteers. Thank you for those that came out. It was a lot of fun. It was nice to walk with you.
It was.
And you and your family. My family had fun and Mr. Dean and my son caught up on a little baseball talk, I understand, so. Correspondence, we have five, five pieces of correspondence. And Mr. Dean, I'm going to ask that we repeat these pieces of correspondence in the packet next time we meet, since we'll be taking up the single use plastic. But these were five, five letters endorsing the ordinance. And then notification from Xfinity about some increased pricing and services. And lastly, a letter from the Community Center Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, that's from, that has to do with the Parks and Rec new building. We went for a grant.
Yeah.
And there wasn't enough funding for it.
The board calendar, we will meet again December 19th. And at that meeting, Mr. Dean, when we put the agenda together for that meeting with the Assistant Town Manager, let's try to get our calendar through January, maybe even into February.
Okay.
We can discuss. Do you know if the Finance Director will require us to come in again before December on the encumbrances? Or will he have that done by the 19th? Is that to be determined?
We just put something out about that last week. So let me get an update to the board as soon as I can.
So that would be the only extra meeting in December is if we have to meet briefly for that. And then just in closing, you know, we've had the opportunity to see her publicly a few times. But I just want to thank Jennifer Perry for her years of service. Her last day is Friday. And just thank her for her service. I mean, you know, we've gone on and on, so we won't do that again. But really wishing her and her husband Scott the best in retirement, best of health and happiness. And boy, we're going to miss her.
Yes, and her mother, too, who is so proud. I mean, so absolutely proud of her daughter. They get to spend more time together, so.
Anyway, on that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we stand adjourned. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.